Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I'd like to welcome everyone. This is our annual budget meeting with the Nash Community College and the Nash Public School System. And of course, it is a public meeting, and I'll be a lot of prayers here. Glad to see y'all back in the room. Been a while. But it is customary for the Board of Commissioners to begin each one of their meetings with a prayer by a commissioner. And during this time, you're welcome to stand and join us in that prayer. You're welcome to use this time for your own prayer, or you're welcome to use it for a moment of silence, whichever is appropriate for you. And at this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Dan Coles to have the invocation. What's going on?
Thank you, Commissioner Coles.
And at this time, I'd like to call the Nash County Board of Commissioners to order. And with that said, Chairman Lamb, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. At this time, I'd like to call the Nash County Public School Board of Education to order.
I would like to say that we have one member out. Ms. Wells is not able to be with us tonight. She is actually in the hospital but doing a lot better. And if you will keep her in your box moving forward, the Board of Commissioners would greatly appreciate that. And just moving right into the agenda, item number four is a budget presentation by the Nash Community College. And Dr. Honeycutt, I'll turn it over to you. And just a little procedure, we did bring Megan with us tonight. And what she will be doing, if we can pause between each speaker, she will be walking up to the podium and cleaning it with an ultraviolet light that the county purchased a few months ago that does a real great job of cleaning the podium off and the microphone off. And with that said, thank you for being here tonight, Megan. I'll turn it over to you, Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Well, first off, welcome to campus. This may be the biggest live audience I've sat in in 18 months. I don't know. It seems like forever, doesn't it? But for those of you who haven't gotten around to me, I am Lou Honeycutt. I'm very privileged to be the fifth president of Nash Community College. I began this job on November 1st of 2019. So I like to think of myself as a COVID president, and I should probably get a honeymoon year after this is all over at some point. But I'm very pleased tonight to present the campus update, y'all. And then I'm going to turn it over to the smarter of the two of us representing the college tonight. What are you shaking your head yes for? Adrian Covington, our CFO. I'm also pleased tonight to have the Chair of our Board of Trustees, Sonny Foster, with us here. And as most of you probably know, Ms. Wells, Mr. Davis was referencing, and then also Mr. Outlaw, also serve on the Board of Trustees. So we have great representation here tonight. But welcome to campus. We are, it's so nice to see people in the Brown Auditorium again, because it's always a heavily used site. I want to take y'all through a little bit of an update, then again, I'm going to turn it over to Adrian to talk strictly about the budget. But I get asked a lot at every position I've ever had, do you make an impact where you're at? Me personally, or the college I'm at? I wanted to show you all the impact that Nash Community College has on this county. I promised the commissioners last year I would come to this meeting with data. I was brand new last year, and I didn't know all the answers, still don't, but here's some of them. One of the things I asked when I first got here is, where do we live? Do we support the county by how we, where we live and as well as work? And in fact, the answer is that we do. And if you look at that circle number up there on Nash County, that is almost 60% of our full complement of part-time and full-time people that actually have a Nash County address. If you add the counties that are right around us, it pulls us into the 80s, which means we do have some that drive, but the majority of them have their doctors here. They eat here, they shop here, they get gas here. So we do support the county just by where we live, just by means of where we live. The second question I always get asked is, what do y'all give back? And when I talk about give back, I'm talking about volunteer hours outside the scope of work. And I was really happy to, this is the second question I asked data on. I was very happy to see the results. And indeed, Nash County or Nash Community College does give back to the county and beyond. 69% of our full-time employees go or contribute almost 7,000 volunteer hours a year. So we're very proud of that. Now, that's not all in Nash County. That's wherever they live, whether it's in libraries, churches, or whatever it might be. But here's the big one that I get asked all the time. Is there an impact, positive impact on the economy? And as a matter of fact, there is. You may have heard, if you've heard me speak before, this first number, we serve annually out here about 79,000 people. Now, you're saying to yourself, wait a minute, y'all say 12,000 students. This auditorium, this complex alone serves about 29,000 people a year, just all the events that you've all come to, I've went to. Now, in the last year, much to Adrian and I's chagrin, we haven't been able to do those. But this number was for 2019. We're not going to count during COVID years, just act like it didn't happen, and then we'll start back up and we can start having activities on campus. That's about 79,000. We just entered into, or just got the preliminary data on a new economic impact study through EMZ, which is the international group that does economic impact studies. This is preliminary data, and you're really not supposed to share that until they tell you it's final, but I'm going to share it just for y'all tonight. The economic impact that EMZ estimated for us on the county, $86 million annually. Think about that from a return on investment. That's about a $31 return on investment for every county budget dollar we get. If I could get my retirement account to do that, I could retire a lot quicker. So I think it's a very good return on investment. Here's one that EMZ gave us that I didn't know we would get this in the data, but I think it's great. One of every 38 jobs in this county is influenced or is supported by the activities of the college and the students. So are we an important hub in the county? Absolutely, but you already know that. Here's the other thing, if you take nothing away from this talk tonight, we never closed. We took our Easter break and moved it to spring break last March and took six days to get everyone ready to start back up when the shutdowns happened. We, on day seven, brought back fire and basic law enforcement and EMS and all those things you can't teach online that were essential, and then we continued to bring programs back. But we never closed our doors at all. When you look at, when people say, well, how many of y'all are on campus? When are you coming back to campus? 55% of us have never left campus, including me and my senior staff. We were all on campus the whole time. Some of our people worked, you know, 75, 25, or 50/50, but we really only had 17% that were really off-campus for the majority of the last year. Those were our curriculum transfer faculty. If you're teaching history and all your classes are online, we really didn't need you to be on campus. Now, what we found, though, is our students do need us to be on campus. So as we get back to normal, you're going to see more and more of, that 17 will soon be back on campus as well. Just to give you an idea of the kind of classes we offer and what's happened over the last year, if you look at Fall 19, the last normal semester, pre-COVID, we were already doing, we were doing more online than most people might have thought. Online or distance, meaning completely online. Nash Community College, way before my time, back in 2015, took on online as a challenge and mastered it. So we were already doing a lot of online, about 70/30, 70 in-person, 30 online. With COVID, that flipped. We had to take as much online as we could to continue to operate. But you know, there are things that you can't teach online, let's say like welding and many other things, medical assisting and things like that. So we flipped some, but not all. I'm really proud of Team Nash, because by this fall, we are already going to be approaching normal again. We don't know that we will ever get 70/30 again, because our online has really increased, and it's a quality online. We will probably top, go somewhere 60/40, or maybe even 50/50. So we're relatively close to normal now. We think by Spring '22, which seems like a long way away, but it's not, that normalcy will have come back to Nash Community College. So community college enrollment across the country is down. In a typical downturn, economic downturn, community college population goes up. This was not a typical downturn. When people are trying to figure out how to feed their families and keep a job or send their kids to, or work with their kids in school at home, they don't have time for college. We do think we're going to see, we hope we're going to see a rush in the near future of people coming back. But just to give you an idea of what happened around the state, there are 58 community colleges in the state. Only one showed growth last year. It was 6%. And I've called them and said, how did you do it? And they said, I have a great team. Well, so do I. But we're very happy that at least one did. But that means 57 others did not grow. The average loss in the system was 5.6%. That's a pretty good loss, right? The loss at Nash Community College is almost 10%. So we had a larger loss. We're 51st out of the 58 for a loss. We don't like that, but that's just the way it is. So the question you're asking now is, why is the board letting me stay? Well, they don't blame me for that, I know. And they've been extremely supportive, and we've got a lot of great ideas coming back. And so how are we going to recoup this enrollment? Well, number one, we're coming back to normal, not new normal. I said this to one of our trustees not too long ago, I said something about new normal, and he said, I don't want new normal. I want handshakes and hugs and group meetings and things like that. So do we. So we're going to be back to normal soon. We are doing some incredible in-the-box, but a whole lot of out-of-the-box thinking, and then really coming back to some basics that are just too simple not to work. So there's a lot of irons in the fire on that. One of the things we have always done here since 1967, but we're certainly going to ramp up on moving out of COVID, is emphasizing skills. Not just emphasizing skills, but changing the messaging that we've all gotten for 50 years, that everybody needs a four-year degree to survive. That is not true. Everybody doesn't even need a two-year degree to survive. We have many programs that we call Career in a Year, or Career in Six Months, or Career in Three Months, where you can train up and get a job or a better job. Go back later and get a four-year degree. Let's get you in the workplace early on. Currently, we're in our strategic planning process, which makes working out of COVID a great thing, because we're starting to do all this planning. One of the silver linings of COVID, we would have had our strategic plan done last year had COVID not hit. We would be redoing it now. So because of COVID, we had to postpone it, but it's going to be a much better, clear vision for us for the next five years. It'll go into effect in July. The key to sustainable growth for Nash Community College is right in our own backyard. It is Nash County. There are plenty of people to go around, plenty of people that need education. So along those lines, one of the things I've been doing, and it has been the most awesome part of my job so far, well, there's a lot of awesome parts of my job, but I've been going to the city and town halls and meeting with the councils and saying, what can we do for you? And it's been great to go to Castilian moment. I've done five, I've got six to go. I was going to have these done by summer of last year, and then COVID hit. So I'm a little late getting them done. But again, now even their needs have changed. And we're saying, instead of you coming to me, what can I do for you? How can we bring Nash Community College to you? We are very focused on becoming less campus-centric. There are many, many barriers to people coming here. It is seven miles from here to downtown Rocky Mount. That's a barrier for some people. Well, then let's go to downtown Rocky Mount. There are various barriers for people in Southern Nash County to come here for classes routinely. Then let's go to Southern Nash County. So you're going to see a lot of ideas about that, taking classes and things out, services out to the county, removing barriers. We're talking about a mobile classroom situation. The board doesn't know this yet, so we're not spending money yet, but where we can take the college literally in a mobile setting to anywhere we want to. We're also looking at storefront classrooms, where we don't need a lot, we just need a room to meet and a room to offer services. And then our Rocky Mount meal classroom, you're going to start seeing a lot more activity down there from us with services and enrollments, things, events, and things like that. We also have, and one of them's here tonight, we have incredible partnerships with our other educational family. And with Dr. Ellis being new, me being new, we hit it off immediately, which might scare y'all in a lot of ways, but he has got so many great ideas, mentoring ideas, we matched on that so closely. Dr. Duff out of Wesleyan, Wesleyan is not a competitor for us, they're a partner. And we are committed, Dr. Duff and I, with Dr. Ellis, to take students from pre-K through four years in Nash County. If we can educate students here all the way through, if they want a four-year degree, regardless of what else they might want, certificates or diplomas, if we educate them in the county, we're going to keep them in the county. I left my home county when I was 19 years old, and I've never been back, because there just weren't opportunities there. If I'd have stayed in my county, I'd have been there still. So we want to keep young people here in the county. So am I worried about enrollment? Absolutely, it keeps me up at night. But it's not going to ruin my life, because the cool thing about it is, this is Team Nash we're talking about. I have worked with many, many incredible teams. I have never worked with a team that's as incredible as the one I work with now. They are truly a special group of people. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Adrian in just a second. But I do want to say, we are so excited about the purchase of the adjacent property on the west side of campus and the new animal facility that's going to go in, because we have a vet tech program that is growing and going to continue to grow, and that space is just going to be incredible for us. And probably more importantly, or as importantly, there are about 560 of us out here, and we could not do what we do. I'm very privileged. In my job, I get to literally change lives every day. We could not do that without your support. So we're immensely grateful for the continued support of Nash County. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to the smarter of the two of us, and Adrian's going to talk about the budget.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. I wanted to start out, just show you some of the things that we've been working on throughout this year with our county funds. So this is our new advising and success center that we have constructed in a part of the library, downstairs area of the library. Our current advising center is upstairs in the mezzanine area of the library, which presents some ADA issues, so for student accessibility, this will be much better. This area is actually right across the rotunda hall area from our current student enrollment services. So it'll be much more convenient for our students to get the services that they need. The next item, and I'll say, I know it's generally frowned upon to take pictures of bathrooms, but nobody was in the restrooms, I promise. But on the left is the old restrooms, the originals to the buildings in A and B. And here is our new, modern-looking bathrooms. Everybody is so happy with these. And two of these bathrooms are kind of right at our front door, student services area, the most used on campus. So this was a great improvement to the ceilings. Next, we've also been working on removing and trimming some of the shrubs on campus. One, just to open up the quad area, and also of major importance is to increase visibility, improve security on campus. So that's been another project. So moving on to next year now, we have, y'all have a budget packet on your table. But this is just a comparison of our current budget versus our request. And looking at operating, so for this upcoming year, we're requesting just over $2.4 million in operating, and that represents a 0.35% increase there. Capital, it's about a 7% increase. And then expansion funding for two positions, additional full-time custodial position and additional maintenance position. So that's 109. So total budget request is 2.9, just over 2.9 million, a 5.23% increase. So looking at our operating budget, a little bit over 0.35% increase. We've got a couple of things going on this year. First, we're asking for a 5% increase for our custodial and maintenance staff, and that is in line with what we are hoping our state-funded employees will get, based on the governor's budget, which is a 5% increase. The last couple of years, we have given, thank you for your support, between 3% to 5% increases for our facilities and maintenance staff. The next big, huge savings that we are seeing this year is in our phone line item. We went out, competitive bid process, and we have switched to a company called True IP, and we're actually going to be able to see annual savings of $61,000 in our phone services. So that was just a big win there, and we're very excited about it. And actually, I've had other colleges call and ask me about the company, but I'm so far, so good. It's great service and great customer service. We're also out for bid for our insurance services. We put that out for bid every three years, and we are anticipating some increase in that liability and cyber insurance. So the 5% increase for the salaries, and then coupled with the savings, that's why we're seeing that kind of 0% increase in the operating. And I did mention the expansion request for the additional full-time custodial and maintenance, so that's showing in the operating line items. All the other items in the operating budget are based on a 2% increase or a decrease of whatever savings we could realize and project. In capital, we are requesting $225,000 for building maintenance, and that's things like upgrading lighting, replacing carpeting, and so forth like that. ADA, automatic door openers, and so forth, adding those. Also asking for $35,000 in equipment funds, that's to purchase a used tractor with a front-end loader. The current one we have is actually a hand-me-down from another community college that didn't need it anymore, and we got it years ago, but that's coming to the end of life on that. And also in that equipment line, it's just miscellaneous equipment, string trimmers, things like that, so replacements as they go out. And last, we have in the capital upgrades, $184,000, excuse me, to replace the roof on building D1, and to replace the boiler in building B, and also to replace some HVAC drives in the S and T and B and I building. Any questions I can ask, answer? Thank you for your time and support.
I see a trend in society now where the community colleges, it appears going to be more prevalent involved in economic development than our colleges and universities. Are you looking at that and trying, even the President said that it's not, that you don't have to have a degree, four-year college degree in order to be as successful in life here in America? But I've heard it even before he said it, been going on, I know, for the last two or three years. Are you preparing for that day? Well, it's really here now. So I'd like to hear your comments, either from, both of you.
Absolutely. Yes, definitely the shift toward those short workforce development credentials and so forth. And Dr. Honeycutt, if you'd like.
Well, that's a wonderful question. We call it the Great 58 in the state, because there's 58 community colleges. But across the nation, we know the key to coming out of COVID and the key to success is the community college. From President Biden, all the way down, it's being talked about. We're addressing that as aggressively as we can. We've got, our Small Business Center has just been incredibly active in the last year with Tiara Norwood, working with small businesses. Our, as I mentioned to y'all, the Career in a Year, the Career in Six Months, the Career in Three Months, we're ramping up that marketing campaign to talk to people, and it's really more of a messaging thing. We've got to convince parents in particular that you don't have to have a two-year Involved in economic development than our colleges and universities. Are you looking at that and trying to even the presidency that night that you don't have to have a degree? Four-year college degree in order to be as successful in life here in America. But I've heard it even before he said it, been going on, I know for the last two or three years. Are you preparing for that day? Well, it's really here now. So I like to hear your comments either from, for both of you.
Absolutely. Yes, definitely the shift toward those short workforce development credentials and so forth.
Well, that's a wonderful question. We, we call it the great 58 in the state because there's 58 community colleges. But across the nation, we know the key to coming out of COVID and the key to success is the community college. From the, from President Biden, all the way down, it's being talked about. We're addressing that as aggressively as we can. We've got our small business center has just been incredibly active in the last year with Tierra Norwood, working with small businesses. Our, as I mentioned to all, the career in a year, the career in six months, the career in three months, we're ramping up that. Marketing campaign to talk to people and it's really more of a messaging thing. We've got to convince parents in particular that you don't have to have a two-year or four-year degree to succeed. We have a lineman program that takes 16 weeks, 16 weeks to gain the certificate. It's one semester. Most of them are underwritten by Duke or Electric Cities or someone. The average, average starting salary last year with no college debt, $50,000. That's sellable. And so what we're doing and part of our marketing is developing little vignette videos. That show a student talking about what the program's done for them. An employer talking about what the student's done for them. And then the requirements of the program after that and an earning potential. And we think we're going to see big results. We're already seeing a lot of interest. But we're also seeing a lot, well, but what do you offer in the two-year area? Well, we build programs in the certificate side that you can put, you can move those into a diploma if you choose. So we're going to, we're going to sell, sell, sell on short-term training, short-term certificates. But during, when we've got you, we do the did you know game. Did you know? If you just did three more certificates, you could move into this diploma. And so we think we can start a pipeline. Steve and I, Dr. Ellis and I are working very diligently on, and we are also with Rocky Mount Prep. On a third and fourth grade level program, we will always recruit from 12th grade down. But we're starting to recruit at third grade and while we want to brand them to the college. But also, believe it or not, third graders know what they want to be when they grow up. Let's keep them on track. And if it's a skills area, let's not let someone convince them to go on to the university. Let's keep them in the skills area. So I think locally between Nash County Public Schools. The charter schools, the private schools, Wesleyan and us, we're going to have that covered. We're very aggressive in that.
People now, young people are encouraged to be entrepreneurs. And so they're going to need some guidance to be successful. Because I know way back in the past, only 33%, 100% were successful. So we added a game, so we want to make it even better. That entrepreneurs can be successful with whatever good idea they have that will be productive here in society.
Yes, sir. Excuse me. Through our small business center with Tierra Norwood, we work really closely with the chamber. And really anybody else that wants to work with us, she has been, for COVID to have been like it was, she's been as busy as anything we have. Looking at entrepreneurs, how do we get you successful in business? So we kind of cover all the bases out here and we're just going to expand on that with my goal of being, training them, educating them. And keeping them in Nash County. That's the goal.
Dr. Governor, if I could ask one of the two of you, could you share with our board? I'm not going to ask the dollar amount, but what you've been able to do with your CARES funding? And what you propose to do with your American Recovery money?
It's a great question and I'm going to give it to the smart person.
Thank you for Nash Community College in Rocky Mount. I think it's important to piggyback on what you were saying that we embrace and support STEP. Of all the work that STEP has done here in Nash and Edgecombe Counties. If you're not familiar with STEP, ask me, or you can Google it, find out more. It's a partnership that we have with the two community colleges and the two school systems. And we train kids, we start in high school and they get certificates and get jobs. It's something that we really need to support and appreciate the fact that we have STEP here in our counties.
Absolutely.
Adrian, Adrian, if you could pause just a moment, Megan. I'm sorry, it's just our normal protocol.
Okay, so we have at this point received two different pots of federal funding. The CARES Act and what we call CARES Act II, the Cerusa Funds. Part of, half of that allocation had to be used for student emergency relief. So we have awarded the first bucket of money to students in need. And actually next week, the second, from the second bucket of money, that will be awarded. The other part of those funds are what's called institutional funds. And we could use those for transitioning over to virtual environment, professional development. We are looking at using this for this next round. And there's still a lot of questions about that, about this next round of funding. But we're looking at the possibility of being able to use some of those funds to improve ventilation systems. So we really hope to take care of like the control system and the S and T and other projects on campus. So we're actually working with Snyder Electric right now. They're doing a campus-wide study of all of our HVAC ventilation systems. And they'll come back with some recommendations on what needs to be done and we'll use those funds for that.
I don't have any idea the amount you're receiving, but is it possible that some of your capital and plant? I know we all, our board is certainly trying to use these funds for one-time expenditures because they won't be here long. And we don't want to create reoccurring expenses.
Right.
And may not be even able to. We're waiting on guidance as well. But is there a chance that some of the capital and plant fund requests could possibly utilize those funds for those?
Yes, sir. Possibly the boiler and also those maybe the drives, the frequency drives.
Just a question that I have. Thank you. Other board members have any questions?
Thank you.
While we own the Nash Community College, are there any other discussions or any other concerns that community college may have or our board may have? We do not assemble together very often and it'd be a great time to bring those concerns up. This is a very quiet group tonight. Mr. Bellfield, what did you say, sir? Larger than that. With all the agenda, the next item is a break and we hadn't been here long. I'll be glad to call for the break. If anybody wished to take a break or you want us to move straight into the Nash County Board of Education. Any hands for a break? We'll see you none. I will move to item number eight, which is the budget presentation by the Nash County Board of Education. And Dr. Ellis, I'll turn it over to you, sir. And you'll say. Just checking.
So good evening.
Good evening.
I am Steve Ellis, Superintendent Nash County Public Schools. Before we start, I wanted to thank Dr. Honeycutt for his, being the hostess with the most this night. I appreciate it. We have met during these pandemic times and we've gotten to grown a pretty good friendship and some good ideas we're sharing to. See how we can better the education of our students and how we move forward. So I appreciate you hosting us tonight and look forward to our relationship. And back to that, it has been a trying year. And personally, I just want to thank my board and my team for a great job. It has been a lot of different things we've had to talk about this. I'm thankful we are in Plan A. It took us a while, but we're in Plan A. Our students are in school. We've probably got about 28% that are virtual, but hopefully next year we're going to be 100% in school. So that is, that is positive for me. Also want to thank the county commissioners because in spite of our pandemic. We still have seemed to be able to move forward with many items for Nash County schools. And I think that's, that's important to me because our momentum has not stopped because of the pandemic. We're going to share some pictures tonight of that, but we've still moved forward with the school. And our projects this year, and I just want to thank the county commissioners for their support. Because I believe that we will be a better school system. And a better county when we work on the same team. So collaboration and partnership to me has been great this year. And I hope we can share some of our improvements that we've made. So Mr. Davis, Executive Director of Facilities and Maintenance is going to come and present some of the projects we've had this year.
Mr. Davis, you'll pause one moment.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't think anyone was more happier to see kids come back to school than my staff. Since last March, when we vacated buildings, we went full throttle on a lot of projects that we normally can't do with, with kids on campus. Start with, we're doing a lot of mechanical upgrades within the district. Hubbard Elementary is a campus we've just moved on to with renovations. This is the second year. This year, we've completed five classrooms. You can see that on the left. If I can get that. Classroom on the left. We're also going to be renovating the LED lights, putting ceiling tile in. It's basically just a, just a renovation of the classroom and mechanical systems. You see on the right, Southern Nash High School, we've been on this campus for about five years. We've been doing a lot of this work in-house, either during spring break or during the summer, changing this equipment. The lower picture was, was taken this spring. We did Southern Nash High School, the VRF system in the main office area. We also did Northern Nash. You'll see this, this started last March, about a week after COVID shut the system down. We moved in, totally wrecked the office area, admin area, and put the new VRF system in. We did all of this in-house, new suspended ceiling work, new LED lights. If you'll look at the bottom left, that's the finished product of the office area. So every office in that area complex was renovated. Bottom right picture and the upper picture, we're actually been working on that. That's Southern Nash High Hallways. We like one unit left and we'll have the entire older building totally renovated, ceilings, lights. We've just been kind of marching around the campus. We should finish that in the next week. Gymnasium renovations. This has been an ongoing project. We started about five years ago. With Northern Nash, Southern Nash, they were our older campuses with bleacher renovation. We went from high schools down to middle schools, pulling out all the old bleachers, putting new bleachers in, sanding and refinishing the gym floors. We've now started and hopefully going to be finishing up elementary schools soon. Picture on the left, you can see is the bathroom at Spring Hope Elementary. And the bottom is the foyer. That's all new suspended ceilings, lights, mechanical equipment. If you look at the far right picture, that's the finished product. We're sanding and refilling the gym floor, new bleachers, new mechanical equipment. You see the sockbook running across the top of the gym. All of that was completed with my staff while COVID has had our children out. You'll also notice the gym, gym windows, the top picture. That's the before. We're starting to do gym renovations from a mechanical standpoint. When putting air in, we're trying to. Change the heat load on these windows and try to save on utilities because these older windows, the heat value and recovery time, it costs a lot of energy. The bottom picture basically shows the finished product. Finishing up gym renovations, we completed Southern Nash High Gymnasium. It was completed in the fall with the, with the gym. And Middlesex Elementary, you can see those bleachers were replaced along with the LED lighting. The gym floor was refinished when we had the addition several years back. And finally, you'll see Cooper's Elementary School. There are new bleachers there and the floor was also sanded and refinished as well. And you can see the glare in that picture, the new LED lighting that we installed as well. Parking lot resurfacing. This is something we've kind of fallen back on because mechanical has taken precedent in some of the roofing jobs. But we have been trying to concentrate last year and the upcoming years of catching up on some of our paving. You can see Hubbard was completed over spring break a few weeks ago. Nash Central Middle School was also completed over spring break. And Northern Nash, this was the phase two piece. It was completed this past summer. And we had phase one the previous spring. So Northern Nash High School has totally been resurfaced. Roofing projects. This is National Central High School. This is the lower roof of the two-story building. That building is hard to believe is going on 20 years old. That's a 20-year roof. We're having a single membrane roof. It's starting to separate. So now we're in the process now of coming back, starting to replace that roof. You'll also see Williford Elementary. So another school that was, was opened in 97, 98 with a 20-year roof. We completed that one this past summer in phase one of Fairview Elementary. Phase two will be completed this coming summer. And finally, Red Oak Elementary School. I know it's been a long time coming, but we are getting a lot closer. We're in the final stages of contract signing. We are planning a pre-construction meeting somewhere around the 17th of May or that week. HG Reynolds has told us they will be mobilizing June 1st. They could move in and have been told they could, but with steel not arriving until November. We're going to wait for kids to get out so we can put security fencing up and they'll start mobilizing. June 1st and start work. Even with a June 1st start date, the contractor saying there may be about a two-month period. They're sitting there waiting for steel. So pushing it back a couple of weeks to get kids out for this year seems to be the best move. We're also looking at doing a groundbreaking. We have not got that finalized yet. But we're looking at toward the end of May or the first week of June. And once we finalize that, we'll, we'll get that out. Thank you. Questions now? Yes, sir.
In your maintenance and improvement of schools, I noticed, I didn't see you call any of the schools that are located in the city of Rocky Mount. Are they in the shape that they don't need maintenance, improvement?
We, I did not list all of the products we did and some of the schools I did list have been, we have done work, Rocky Mount Middle, we've done work. I could sit up here for probably 30 minutes and tell you everything we have done within the district. This is our larger projects that we have, we have taken on.
That's what I, that's what, that's what I should have said, larger project. I know there's some maintenance that needs to be done.
These are all of our capital improvements now. The way I try to do this on some of the other, other campuses from a mechanical standpoint, if we have a single unit that fails. I try to have enough money versus replacing. if we have a single unit that fails, I try to have enough money versus replacing a compressor. I like to change the piece of equipment out. But Williford and Fairview Elementary, we've done work at Edwards Middle. So we have spread the capital money out throughout the district. I do definitely, when I do the budgets, try to make sure that we hit every part of the county.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Joyce Jarrett. For those who have, I've not met, the CFO for Nash Rocky Mount Public Schools. Nash County Public Schools, excuse me. I'm here tonight to share with you how we're spending the funds that you are appropriating to us. We have added an estimated $445,000 for fines and forfeitures and interest to the appropriations with a total of $23,592,614. The majority of the monies will be spent on salaries, supplements, and benefits. And that's because we have a number of salaries, 14 right now, of certified teachers that are paid out of local funds. And then a couple of departments, the staff are paid out of local funds. It does not matter where the stats, the salaries of class certified are paid. The local supplement is paid out of local. It is not, the salaries can be paid out of various programs in state and also in local. But the local supplement, the supplement itself for certifies, for the administrators, and those at central office receiving supplements are paid out of the local funds. So adding to that, any change or increase in the state that occurs beyond this budget will be factored into what we have to pay out of local funds. And those are things that we don't know right now. Additionally, the cost of medical and retirement increase annually, we don't know that either at this point, what the state will do. But because of historical data, we anticipate an increase in that, in those rates. So the total of salaries, supplements, and benefits right now that we're estimating, based on what we know, will be $13,173,288. Then we have what some would say were fixed costs also for purchase services. And those are things that we have contracts with other vendors for insurance purchases, any types of contracts for maintenance or things such as that maintenance. What, when I say maintenance, I mean utilities and those types of things. That's $6,725,618. Supplies and materials that we may need within central office are also factored into the local budget of $2,43,708. And then, as you know, we transfer a certain portion to the charter schools within this district. And we are looking at having, based on our numbers now, enrollment, that we will be transferring $1,650,000, $50,000 of the local funding to the charter schools. So we have the revenue coming in. And this shows how we anticipate dispersing the revenue for '21, '22 academic year. Then for the capital outlay funding, we, Mr. Davis has provided the, how he is going to allocate the $1,577,281 that you will be appropriated for this academic year, '21, '22. And these are referenced here for your view. This is our simplistic summary of our budget. Thank you.
As it relates to local funding, how many teachers do you have that are totally paid out of local funds?
Right now, it's 14. And that includes their, 14 are paid out of local, that includes their salary, the medical, retirement, and their stuff.
The question was asked for the community college about the ESF funding, which is, we were given CARES Act money at the beginning of this year. Then we're going to get around two and three in the following months. I'm assuming it'll be here by the end of the month. SR2 is going to be 16 million. SR3 is 36 million. And this money has to be spent by, you can tell it expires in about two and a half years. Now, it is line item for certain things. So it would be for learning loss. So we'll have things such as Summer Scholars Academy for at-risk kids who had learning loss this year. This will be for three years of summer scholars. Air quality. Mr. Davis talked about HVAC. Any air quality renovations we can do, we can use with this money. And there's other categories, but these are the simple ones. Transportation, getting kids back and forth during, during learning loss. After school, before school, transportation. Teacher support, counselors, nurses, psychologists, sociologists, mental health, social emotional learning tools to support students, and technology. So we do have a good deal of money coming to us, but it is categorized. So we have to spend it the way it is line item, okay? But that is a good amount of money for us to begin some of the upgrades we need to do in the system. So in October, when I came up here, we talked about some of the needs for the school system. We talked about the technology, what I really think technology is going to be taking care of with the ESF funding. The upgrades of the schools, I think we're going to have that money for, from ESF funding to assist in that. But what we don't have money for, what I'm concerned about, we talked about in October, is the local supplement quest. Because our theory is that we're going to start losing teachers based on our supplement. Our supplement right now is 10%. What we are requesting tonight is, we've given you about two or three formulas. If we went to a 1%, 1.5, or 2%. And then what we did was non-certified. And through this pandemic, in my opinion, a lot of the essential workers were left without getting the bumps and some of the money that the states and the feds were giving out. This would take care of these non-certified salary increases. A lot of these workers had steps this year that we gave them increases, but the steps were $2, $3. Wasn't very meaningful, in my opinion. So what we are asking is for a 1% or a 1.5 or 2% increase for our non-certified staff. Bus drivers, child nutrition, clerical, maintenance, teacher assistants, transportation. So with that, I just want to thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Once again, I appreciate your support. It has been a tough year, but it's been a rewarding year because I've met many people in this district. And I know together, when we work together, the goal of making our students the best there can be is going to happen. So if you have any questions, I will take them down.
Dr. Dallas, why, why are you at the podium there? First of all, I'd say in a future year, it'd be nice if we had, it's a long way up there where you're at. And we couldn't see those.
So we did that on purpose.
Well, I fully understand that's a possibility, but I don't believe what you just said. But it would have been nice, like Community College had, and just, just future reference, if we could have had that in front of us. But just trying to keep up with what you're saying, it appears like to me that your budget request matches what you got the current year and pretty much what you've gotten for a number of years, probably four, possibly five. With the exception of your last slide, which was along the line of an increase in supplements.
Correct.
Was, am I right in that statement for the benefit of our board members?
Correct.
We really couldn't have, we just couldn't follow what you were doing.
And I'll, and I'll get copies for everyone.
Okay. But we, we probably could talk about it better if we had it here and could actually see the numbers. But is that a true statement that is pretty much where we being with the exception of the last item that you had up there?
Yes.
Okay. So the current expense, the capital expense matches what you had the year we're currently in?
Correct.
Okay. Would that be, Mr. Bellfield, excuse me?
Do you have the figures now? If Nash County Board of Commissioners approve a 1.5 or 1.2 up to 2% supplement, what that total figure would be?
For teachers, it would be, 1% would be $7.9 million. Ms. Jared, am I reading that right? That's the total. Total. Total.
I think the question, Dr. Dallas, was what would the 1% cost? What would the 2% cost? And if I see it right, you gave the total of what 10 or 12% would be.
Before I butcher these numbers, let me get Ms. Jared up here.
We actually, in reading the local news from your meeting the other night, it seemed to be some confusion in the numbers. And I actually got with our finance director to get her to explain it to me. But that's probably where the confusion came in. But Mr. Bellfield, hopefully before you form an opinion, I think you're going to see something a little different.
Okay. A 1% cost increase of where we are right now, just the 1%, including FICA and retirement, is $656,425, a 1%. Adding to what we already have, that, just that increase. Then if we did a 1.5%, that would be, including FICA and the retirement that we have now, which is 21.68%, that would be $984,636. 2% increase, again using FICA, which that never changes, and, well, hasn't, and the 21.68% for retirement, that will cost $1,312,849.
The question was, that's certified employees?
This is certified.
Classroom teachers?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Regardless of where they're paid from?
Cool. That get your question, Mr. Bellfield?
That's for the first, yes.
Yeah, first year.
Yes.
And I know the answer to this, but that number would go up based on an increase from the state.
For the retirement.
Obviously, take the local supplement up some, some amount.
Right.
Right.
For the retirement, when the retirement increases, that will increase.
That's not up there now. That would be based on what the state gives in salary.
Right.
Ms. Jared?
Yes, sir.
How about other county commissioners and Mr. Bellfield? You know, teachers' salaries have been going up. Go over the non-certified salary increase also, so they can hear the numbers, if you don't mind. Because a lot of times our transportation, our cafeteria, child nutrition secretaries, they're left out of the mix. And it's something the state will control teacher salary. But our local will control our non-certified.
Right. Yes, sir. The 1% increase for non-certified and all the different departments and categories are listed, is 1% including FICA and retirement again, is $258,377. A 1.5% increase would be $387,566. And a 2% increase would be $516,754.
Just clarification. Those numbers that you've given us for certified and non-certified is based on the current salaries without any increases from the state?
Right.
3%, 3%, 4%?
Exactly.
Of the employees in the school system, those two categories, who does that not cover?
I think it covers everybody. That's everyone.
I'm thinking about principals, assistant principals, or central staff.
Well.
Do all of those fall in one of those categories?
Yeah. Administration and this, the supplement percentage increase would include the administrators.
But those, that, those costs are in these numbers?
The supplement is in, for the principals would be in the numbers that we shared with you earlier in the other slide.
Understood. And central staff would be in the non-certified.
Right. It, this covers technology.
Would you read that list again on the non-certified, who that includes?
Administration, bus drivers and monitors, child nutrition, clerical, maintenance, teacher, assistants, transportation.
Thank you.
Ms. Jared, are you saying that central office staff personnel are not in certified, they're non-certified?
They're in this category.
These people that you've got listed in non-certified, this is a supplement that we're talking about?
No, this is a percentage increase in their salary, not a supplement.
Okay. Don't you have some of these people that are funded through state or federal funds? For example, clerics?
Some of them are paid out of state, but they do not get an increase when the certified staff get an increase mandated by the state. Their salary is paid, but they don't get an increase automatically. The state has to specify that they get an increase.
And you're saying the state has made no indication that they're going to provide an increase for these people?
No, that, and you're, you're correct. When they gave a bonus this year, none of these people received the bonus. Those individuals that were paid out of the state funds, they did not specify that they would receive that bonus. In fact, they specified they would not receive the bonus.
I don't care about bonuses. I don't think that's a good idea anyway. I'm just looking at salaries. I think most people want a salary. They don't, they don't really want a bonus. They want their salary to, to go up and stay up. So, okay, so this, this includes central office. And you're saying all of these people in all of these categories are funded? None of them are funded locally? They're all state or fed?
No. I said some of them may be paid out of state, some are paid out of local. We try to pay as many out of state as we can. There are some paid out of federal. But whenever there's an increase in state, they do not get that increase automatically.
So is this a supplement? If, if they get paid? If they get paid? If, if they get paid, if they get paid out of state and they don't automatically get an increase that classroom teacher would, is this an increase to their salary or is this a bonus?
It's an increase to their salary. So if we're paying someone $35,000 now and we're taking it from a, a program out of state, if they are to receive a 1% increase, their new salary is what we would pay, draw out of the state funding.
Are any of the people in that category now?
Yes.
But we're already contributing some percentage of their salary?
Those people who are paid out of state, their full salary is paid out of state. They will never get an increase if they're in this category unless it's approved by this government.
But we, we're talking about people potentially will not be considered for a state salary increase. So we're looking at the county fundings of one, one and a half, 2% increase to that salary. And do we have any of these people that currently get any funding from the county to supplement salary? Or, or is this a first, is this a precedent we're setting here?
We're not setting a precedent. In order to calculate what the salary increase is for these individuals, even those who not paid out of local, we had to include everyone who would not, uh, paid, who, who not receive an increase from state to calculate what the impact would be.
Okay, I, I'm good. Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Uh, questions from commissioners? Dr. Dallas, I think the last thing that our board needs is some type of explanation. I see what you're asking us for. I see what you're asking for an increase. And I do know that you're, you're a long way and generally do not finalize your budget till sometime after we have to finalize out because you're waiting on the state to provide numbers for you. What does that calendar look like from this point moving forward for y'all? And whichever wishes after it?
I'm gonna say late June, but, um.
Do, do you think by July the 1st, you would know what your total budget looks like? It seems like to me sometimes it's moved over into July. And I know that depends on what happens in Raleigh.
If they pass the budget, we will, should by July 1, have the allocation of funds that we need to build a budget. Yeah.
The last, is that pretty much y'all summarized your, your program for tonight?
Yes.
The last couple of things that our board has discussed, um, it, it, since we're all here together, uh, and, and it was somewhat mentioned here tonight, uh, and I did, uh, last night from about 1 o'clock to 1:30, 1 o'clock to 2:30, watch y'all's meeting from Tuesday night, just so I'll, I'll kind of know what went on in, in your, uh, committee meeting. But, uh, it, it does bother our board that I think our board continually gets pointed a finger at because of what is spent on Edgcombe County schools or schools located in Edgcombe County is what is spent on schools in, in Nash County. May you, maybe even in Rockhamout versus rural areas. I don't know where the line is. But I think it's very important to note, and I hope you will agree with this, is we really have zero say over that. We give you capital money and from that point on, we don't have any input, uh, we don't have a veto, uh, uh, but it's just all y'all's decision. But that part is important to our board. But the real important part is I took, uh, and I asked you for that, this, and you and Mr. Davis provided it for me and actually gave the time to me after you presented to your board, go through these documents here, which is your 10-year capital improvement plan. And actually, Mr. Davis, uh, Mr. Outlaw was coming to us in May to go over it with our board. Is that the date, in, in the second meeting in May? And, and we have already got that scheduled. But being the number cruncher that I am, and of course, fortunately understand this stuff pretty good because this is the industry that I'm in. But if you take the facts of what this document shows, it, it doesn't prove that that statement is anywhere near accurate. Uh, I took it by each school and I looked at what's been spent and I looked at what's proposed to be spent, and I even went back to your last 10 years and, and brought it forward. And, and what it really shows is, and I tried to do it, I first tried to do it by enrollment. And, and I realized that really wasn't accurate. But then I went back and studied it from a square footage standpoint because really and truly maintenance cost is tied to square footage more so than anything else. And so when you do that, and I'm not here to toot Mr. Davis's horn or anybody on the board that made these decisions. And Mr. Davis, he has no kin to me whatsoever, I promise you that. But actually, there has been more money spent. If you take two categories of school only, being schools located in Edgcombe County and schools located in Nash County, on a square foot basis, there's been more money over the last 10 years spent on the schools in Edgcombe County. Uh, so you hear that constantly, but, but it's just actually not factual information. And I just felt compelled to somewhat defend our board by making that, by making that statement. Now, there are, of course, a great larger number of schools located in Nash County than it is in Edgcombe County. But if you just look at it on a square footage, that's the most accurate way that you can actually determine if that statement. I, I guess what you can say is the political arena uses that to do a fact check on, on that statement when it's made. But, uh, I, I think we, I think your board has done a great job along with the maintenance staff in, in making sure the money was spent equally. And if anything, maybe a little bit heavier on the Edgcombe County side. Now, with that said, uh, I, I would like to discuss, you know, we met in October and I think our board made it very clear that any future increases that we were given to the school system, that our interest would be more along the line of supplements for teachers than probably anything else you could talk about. Now, we do hear, uh, frequently from the public that, uh, in, in the city bill, we were able to obtain a 10-year moratorium on what we were required to give the school system and that we wouldn't, could not be sued during that period of time. That wasn't the interest of this board was deciding to get in a position where we wouldn't be sued. Uh, we want to do each year what we can afford to do. And really and truly, I think the majority of our board feels like that, that's a bad law anyway. And so we wanted a, a, some relief on it. And, and it does appear like soon it will be statewide that way. But we have gone and we looked, and, and it's at least a five-year period when we have given you the same amount of money for current expense as well as for capital expense. Now, in reality, because you've got a declining population, you do get more money per student each one of those years. Uh, because, well, it actually went up just a little bit year before last, I think it was. So we have given you more money, but it, but if you just look at the dollar amounts, it, it has been topped. But we do not do that because we know we can do it and we can't be sued. That, that's, that's another image that bothers our board because some people actually think that. And, and we do have an interest this year, uh, to do something with these supplements, uh, quite frankly. And I think the board i- is glad to see it presented this way. I think the idea that, that, uh, we did when we went from six to eight a number of years ago, and then we did another imp- increment to get from eight to 10, uh, what we did, I know the first time, I don't think we did it the second time or vice versa. But we agreed with the school system to do a 2% supplement increase. But we did it on a shared basis where we picked up the cost of 1%. The school system found the cost of 1% and we did it at the same time. So the teachers would get, uh, a larger, uh, increase in their, uh, paycheck. I think our board would be very interested in pursuing that idea again. Uh, and it looks like to me, with the amount of funds that you have already gotten through the three sources of, of funding that we are getting on a temporary basis, that that may be a possibility for the schools to do. Now, we recognize that that's a reoccurring expense. And we do recognize that i- if you can somehow utilize all this money you got coming, maybe to do something here that would have come here that meets the criteria for these, we call them American recovery funds, you've got a different name for them, that somehow you might could make that work. Uh, and I read in the, one of the local papers, I don't know which one, that you expressed that concern, like I think you should have, that three years down the road, that cost would still be there. And, and we recognize that. Uh, I do think, and our board had discussed this in total, uh, but I, I do think if we could come to that agreement, I, I just feel like you've got a way that you could do it with, uh, I believe with $53 million coming in through those two pots of money. But I, I do feel like, and this board can never, like any board, commit a future board for any funding. Uh, we just can't do that. But I do think if we could come along that agreement, that very possibly by that point, because Nash County is growing and our revenues are going up, our sales tax are going up, our, our taxes are going up, uh, tax collection on property tax is going up. I do feel like that that would be an opportunity in three years where we could pick back up the part that, that you won't be getting funding for anymore. So I, I believe what we're asking tonight is for y'all to consider that idea, spend some time with it and see if we can come to terms along that.
I'm sure, yeah.
Whenever you get all of your funds available to you and know what your funding is going to be. Now, that may not be by July the 1st. But if we have to do a budget amendment, uh, Mr. Lamb or Miss Wood, don't let me get off course. I don't, you know, I don't mind you calling me, telling me I'm wrong on something in public because I'm wrong quite a bit. But very possibly, i- if, if it actually gets into next year. But I believe the board are going to be very interested in knowing what your total budget looks like. The point that was brought up a couple of times, what's the state going to do? Of course, if you're going to get a 10% raise for all school personnel, we'd want to wait till a later period, of course. But, uh, I, I think we all know that that's probably not going to happen. But I'm doing a lot of rambling, but do you understand?
I get it.
What the board's interest is?
I get it. And I think, uh, probably me and Ms. Jared and my team probably need to look at what it would look like and how much it would cost. Because we're, we have some concerns now with that three-year window because, it's just, we just need to make sure we're careful. But we'd be glad to consider it and discuss it.
And I, I do know we've had this discussion before, or Mr. Outlaw, myself, and some other board members. We probably need to look at a further breakdown of each one of those categories and see, we never want names, but we would like to see what key interest is, is classroom teaching, to be, be frank.
I understand.
Uh, I, I know I've heard y'all talk a lot about bus drivers and need to do more for bus drivers. And there's probably numerous ones on that list. But, but I do think, Mr. Outlaw, I don't speak for you, and you help me out because you understand this a little better than I do. But that's our key concern is classroom teachers. But, but if we could go in it and have a full understanding of, of what our money, you know, where, where it's going and so forth, and certainly, we know we do not need to get it in y'all's financial business and we don't intend to do that. But I hear constantly from most every board member, it's classroom teachers, classroom teachers. But that's something we can certainly work on in, in finalizing our two budgets over the next 60 days. Mr. Bellfield, I'd like to give my other board members or our board members an opportunity to chime in on what I've seen.
Edgcombe County, then, then Nash, uh, based on?
What I said, Mr. Bellfield, was if you take it on a square foot basis and look at last 10-year period, on a per square foot basis, there was more money spent per square foot those schools. And I don't see the relevance of a school being in Edgcombe or whether it's in Nash or whether it's in the city of Rockhamout, or whether it's not in the city of Rockhamout. But that's what I hear from some of the public is making that comparison between schools in Nash and schools in Edgcombe. And it concerns us that that statement is made equally, but it's just not an accurate statement.
You're exactly right. It's not accurate. I don't see you making any improvement of, since you're talking about the Edgcombe County side. Because I can remember several years ago, I called attention to OR Pope that he did something, and they showed me the figure, this is what we've been doing at OR Pope. Four years later, it was shut down. And I told, when those figures were presented to me, I told them that it's not true. And it wasn't true then, not anything. And we got to watch these figures and do some follow-up, sure. The figures are saying what has been done.
Well, Derek, again, we have a fine line, as you and I've discussed before.
I'm not here tonight to promote Edgcombe County. But it's a part of the Nash public school system.
Indeed, it is.
And until it's changed, it's our responsibility to keep up these schools, all of them. Say what, 28, 29 of them?
Uh, 27, I can't write on this here, but I, I bet that's.
That, that's the reason. That's the earlier course.
That, that reason to make your statement.
From Mr. Davis, it didn't show anything from the schools even located in City, City of Rockhamout on either side of it. Nash County or Edgcombe County.
I'm not here tonight to dispute a fellow board member, but these documents show different.
I know it's, it's the school board's responsibility, not ours, but, uh, we fund them, so at least we can ask questions and have concerns.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to echo what the chairman said, and I'm in, will support of that. I just, our school system to be the very best it can be. And to be the best it can be, it's got to have good teachers, it's got to have good supporting staff, and it's got to have good bus drivers, dedicated, committed people at all levels. And so I'm willing to look at all those levels, consider and do what's appropriate. I appreciate the, uh, working relationship that we've had recently very much. Uh, I'm just, uh, in tune with working with you guys very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Yeah, specific, what I'd like to see is on the certified side, where you have $656,000, um, for 1% supplement, if you could break that out between teachers and principals and assistant principals? Teachers and administrators in the schools?
Some years back, we actually got to get names, but we got all of our principals and all of our assistant principals. all of our assistant principals, there was a number, not a name. We got their salary, and we got their supplement. And at that time, it appeared that the supplements varied tremendously. So if we could get something like that again, then we can see if any progress has been made in trying to bring those supplemental levels for those positions more in tune.
And that's a little harder than it used to be because the state now allows principals receive money for growth when it comes to schools. So you're going to see, yeah, there's a difference. Yep. And it fluctuates depending on growth, non-growth, but we can break it down, so it won't mean a problem.
If we've got principals and assistant principals, and they're important, we've got to have good principals and good assistant principals. We see a supplement line that is way out of kilter with our classroom teachers, then that's a concern to me, because I think it happens in the classroom.
And I know there's a lot of factors that go into supplements for administrators, you know, which school and that sort of thing, but the list he's talking about, there were principals making 25, 35% supplements, and whereas teachers were getting 10% by then. So that seemed to be, again, I understand you want to bring in good administrators, good principals, but it did seem like the prior administrations, that those, some of those supplements had inflated.
In closing, Chairman Lamb and Dr. Ellis, board members, I do want to leave here tonight with y'all knowing that this board has an interest in doing something for your salaries. And we can certainly get it done this year, I hope. Of course, we've got a short window like we always do, but if we all get to work and work together and keep in touch with one another, I certainly am encouraged that we can make this happen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Before we get to adjournment, I would like to thank the county commissioners for inviting us here tonight. It's been a good year, working with the county commissioners closer than we have in a long time, and I definitely know now that we all are putting children first. It's like we said at our last meeting, you know, our numbers have been down for the last couple of years, student-wise, but as we start getting our students back, I'm glad we're looking, or county commissioners are looking with us on these supplements, because there's going to be a teacher shortage. If we can recruit, like Mr. Outlaw said, the best teachers, we up our supplement, that's going to be even more enticing to get the best teachers to Nash County. That's what we want for our students. With that, I would say the Nash County, Mr. Silver?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Davis, for your remarks tonight in your presentation. I just want to ask of you this, but I know what your answer is probably going to be. We will work extremely hard from this board to make sure that we meet the obligations that you requested, our means, by all means. However, would you give me a commitment tonight for what we can do, the county commissioners will, without any?
Well, Mr. Silver, I need you to say that again, because I'm not sure I understand you speaking.
You may break it down even more.
Maybe if you repeat, this old guy will understand it in a second time.
Thank you for your presentation. We want to have the best teachers in Nash County schools. In order to do that, we have to make it attractive where people just will want to come to Nash County. I understand that classrooms are very important, but in order for the students to get here, got to get on the bus, it isn't a classroom. There are parts of monies that we will be looking at from our district. I asked you if we're unable to meet your request of meeting you halfway, will you take the whole way with the increase?
I think the board of commissioners is prepared to work with you and try to do the best we can do, and that's a political answer, and I fully understand that, but can't back.
But do you understand that I'm asking you to make a commitment tonight, telling me that if we don't come up with money, you will?
That statement was not made, sir. And please understand that we have a seven-member board like you have a 11-member board, and it's got to be a board decision.
I understand that, but please keep in mind what I asked of you when you have your meeting. Thank you.
I did understand. At Mr. Outlaw's request, right, at Mr. Outlaw's request, just to make sure the board understood, we see that there is a lot of money right this minute, more so, quite frankly, in the Nash County that at the time I can remember. And sometimes we distract our head, but whatever we do, our board, Mr. Wood, I promise you, is going to make sure we do it the correct way. And so we work very hard to understand the rules, and right now, we're talking tonight, and we don't have the rules yet, and I don't think y'all have them yet, with this relief, American Relief Funds. But what we are indicating is that we think that your board would be in a position to begin with to help with this 2% supplement, but very possibly at a time, three years from now, you may not be able to, because a lot of this money will be gone away, and we are making the commitment with the understanding that we can't commit a future board three years from now, there may not be anyone sitting here that's sitting here today.
Well, I was asking you for a three-year commitment, not so much a three-year commitment, but simply asking you to do all you can to help us with what we can do. But I get it, I get it.
I think we're saying the same thing, and we're just saying that at that point, we feel like we would be in a position where maybe we could pick up the 1% that you've helped with at that point.
Well, Mr. Davis, I'm a man of faith, so I'm going to say thank you for the 2%.
Yes, sir. Do we sing a hymn now? If we do, what is it, sir? I think Mr. Outlaw has another question.
What is the supplement rate in Wake County? I know we can't compete with Wake County.
Okay. We're in that 7 to 12 range, and the only reason I'm looking at Johnson, so our teachers are all going to bottom, so where are they going?
Yeah, well, I mean, they got to travel from here to Johnson, but surrounding counties other than possibly Wake, that should put us, and I think, I don't remember county manager, but look at this, and I believe our supplemental rate currently is pretty high on the poll of 100 counts. Can't remember exactly where, but this would move us on up, probably in the top 15 or 25, which would be a good place to.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. Hey, so I just tagged in about a half hour ago, but I did hear something that was very interesting, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on it. I too would like to thank the county commissioners for all your efforts and support you've shown to Dr. Ellis and his staff. My question, I think Mr. Davis has alluded to or talked to it, I just want to make sure I'm affirming what he said, and it was regarding that supplement side. We're looking at, and I totally agree, if we can do that matching fund that we did a few years back, one-to-one, it would enable us to better be in position to be competitive with our surrounding counties. So what I'm saying is, I thought I heard you say to Mr. Davis, which I like, you will match the one-for-one, or your team will, as we will, but realizing that the funding for the pandemic will be cut short in three years, and did I not hear you say you think the county is going to a point that you would be, or the commissioner might be able to pick up that 1% if we don't have it?
That's what was said with the caveat that we are doing something that we really can't do.
Understandable.
We can't commit a future board, and, you know, we all may, all seven may still be sitting here, that's something.
But I just want to say I appreciate the board thinking that far out, thinking that you, if in position to do that, that you guys would be willing to do that.
Yes, sir.
Before we adjourn our board, Mr. Silver, I have a lot of faith, just like you're talking about, and I hope whatever board members are sitting here three years from now, would be talking about a 3% to 5% increase.
We better adjourn.
With that being said, I would, in this town, adjourn the Nash County Public School Board of Education.
Okay, are there any action items, Mr. Lamb, or would they take any matter? I see a folder up here, might have clerked anything in there that requires action. I know what that is, okay. You don't know any action we need to do. Okay, with that said, any other comment by a commissioner? Thought I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. I have a motion by Commissioner Outlaw, a search by Commissioner Belfield. Any questions on that motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, we're saying aye. Any opposed by a light sign? Stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.